I would like to ask Don Harter lead us in the pledge and former Mayor Mel Madison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come before you this day and ask for your wisdom and guidance that we go about the business of our community. Father, we pray that you will watch over our community, bless it, keep it safe from future harm, and whatever we may do, may it be pleasing to you. In Christ's name, amen.
We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome. Glad you all could get here. And we'll open the meeting with the consent agenda, which consists of the regular meeting minutes of two-four workshop of two-eleven.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to approve the consent agenda. There's a second. There's a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I need to read in a couple forms.
Okay, go ahead.
The first one being Form 8B, a memorandum of vote in conflict for county, municipal, and other local public officers. There's two of them here. Both of them are for Commissioner Ashbrook. One is for Ordinance 567, an application for a PUD. The reason is he has a relationship with the applicant. And the other one is on Ordinance 566, a large-scale plan amendment, and same reason he has a conflict with the applicant. And these will be attached to the minutes.
Thank you. It's listed in the minutes, but I know you had to read them. So with that, all in favor, aye? Aye. O, same sign, most pass five and o. Building Department, it's not quite time for that update. Long-term recovery committee, I think Ms. Nancy Stewart's here to give us a little update on what they've got going. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, how are we? Not too much of an update, other than to let you know that we are well-prepared and permits have been pulled to do the first roofing project the first week in March, thanks to the city for helping us complete those permits very efficiently and effectively. We have a group from Hosanna Industries coming down from Pennsylvania as full volunteers to help us work on that project. The long-term recovery team is supplying the materials via a grant that we received. And weather permitting, we're going to get four done within the city limits.
Long enough, very good.
The second thing is, we have a warehouse supply depot that's one of those aluminum-framed with reinforced canvas top, very much like you see on the way through Tyndall Parkway. That was also received or purchased through monies through a grant that we have. It is ready for delivery. The Port Authority generously has given us a lease of a dollar a year for two years at one of the old chemical site at the Port Authority, and we're just awaiting permit approval from the city. So as soon as we get that, we can get that installed that's ready to go. It is fairly critical that we get that done in a timely manner because we have tools from a tool bank out of Panama City, which is a national organization that donates tools for projects disasters just like this, that we need to go get and have staged for the volunteers here the first week in March. The last thing I'll say is that organizations, as all organizations do, go through multitudine changes in terms of the board of directors. And right now, we are seeking people who are interested in sharing our grants and donations committee and our case management and unmet needs committee. So if you know of anyone or want to put that out from a city perspective, of anyone who would like to be involved, we would very much appreciate some additional support in those roles. So, any questions?
When you say you're waiting on the permit from the city, is it with the building department?
Yes.
I talked to Bob Krill this morning about it. I think you called Kelly this afternoon. He may have an update for you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We're working on that.
Okay.
Oh, I know. Time, once the building permit is issued, what's the length of time you think for construction of the warehouse?
It's ready to go, so they can have it here within two days, and they put it up within a day.
Wow, super. Okay, good deal. Hope to see it next week.
Yeah, absolutely.
You have another question? Anybody? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, PSGJ, is there anything for that, Commissioner Ashbrook?
No updates, sir.
No updates on that. Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, we have just a few things on the agenda today. The first one is, and it's on page thirty, on page seven, is a preliminary plat approval for a seven-lot subdivision. The applicant is PSGJ LLC, and that was recommended to be approved by the zoning board.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the Reserve on St. Joe Base plat?
Mr. Mayor, I'm on abstaining from this vote. I've got a business relationship with the applicant.
Okay, alrighty. Everybody familiar with the plat? It's seven, seven large lots run along the highway next to St. Joe Bay. I entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hoffman.
Sit.
Second by Commissioner Langston. Any discussion? Any discussion from the floor? Anyone? All in favor, aye? Aye. O, same sign, most pass four, o, one abstention. Okay, next item.
The next item is reverting back to the tennis court. I did submit to Charles Cosson, the school board attorney, a draft of this particular lease, the one that's attached to the agenda. He didn't necessarily have any objections to it, and this is basically the ball's in your court whether you agree with the terms as they are, if you want to make any changes, if you want to go forward with it at all.
Okay. Comments, suggestions, or motions?
I think we need to move forward with it. That's what our plans are all along. We've now heard from the school board and superintendent, and I believe we have some light that's going to be donated. In order to get funding from the TDC, we have to have it in our name, so I'll make a motion we approve the lease.
Okay. Motion to approve the lease of the tennis courts from Gulf County School Board.
I'll second this one.
Okay, second. Discussion?
I just, Mayor, I just want to be clear about if this now belongs to the city, the liability falls on our shoulders. I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. If someone gets injured now, that's on us. Alright, Attorney?
If it's the reason that we were, our negligence, if there's someone playing tennis, there's a substantial risk of being involved.
If it's in good condition now, I'm all for this. If it doesn't take, there's no risk of injury.
We are taking the liability for what happens behind those chain-linked fence. Nothing else, nowhere else, just behind the chain-linked fence. That's the way I have it written here.
Same liability we have with every park or every piece of property we own.
Correct.
You just had to add that one.
And we are agreeing in this lease to add that particular parcel, the tennis court itself, to our policy.
I think it's a great deal.
Our current liability.
Okay. Alright, so motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion pass five and o.
The next thing on the agenda, there are next couple things, they're kind of the same, under the same area. The commissioner terms update and the commissioner qualifying fee petition process update. And I believe where we left that is we tabled that at the last meeting, and we weren't, I've just, if the board has any instructions for me, move forward. If not, it can stay tabled.
Yeah, I agree. I'd say table it, that don't affect anything that's coming here.
Yeah, we've got time to talk about it some more. Everybody, I mean, the majority of the folks I've talked to have been probably going to be against upping the terms to four years, two, but we can still be a vote of the registered voters in the city. But I'm not so sure it'll pass. But I don't want to have special election just for it. If we add it to, add it to one of the elections we have, regular election, then we can add that. Would cost any more. But yeah, in the qualifying fee section, which is basically under the same thing we've been talking about, there's no hurry for that either because it would not affect this year's election. So I would tend to agree with Commissioner Lowry on that. Everybody okay with this table?
Speaker gentleman.
Okay, alrighty.
I have one last thing that I wanted to mention. At the last meeting, I was kind of directed to look into the waste pro-transfer station out on Industrial Road. I actually went out there and looked at it, and boy, it is a, it's a dump. I mean, it's, there's thousands, tons and tons and tons of just garbage. I don't know if any of those cans are really worth anything. They didn't really appear to be to me. But looking, I did, Jim furnished me a letter that was written on April 8, 2019, by the former city attorney, Adam Albritton, basically telling them exactly what I would put in the letter right now. My opinion really is that the letter writing is over. We did withhold a substantial amount of money from the last payment. I believe we start using that money and start cleaning that place up. That's my, would be my recommendation. I don't believe me writing any more letters. All that's going to do is waste time. And at the end of the process, if that's not enough money to clean it up, well, then we can discuss possibly some litigation against them to try and recoup some money. We can cross that bridge when we get to it. But at this particular juncture, I just think writing more letters is just a waste of time. But I look for instruction from the board, how they like to proceed. Looks awful out there.
Elaborate on that.
Yeah, I was the one that brought that up. And what, when was that letter sent out?
Letter was written April 8, 2019, coming up on, almost a year ago.
Yeah. And the reason why I brought this up is because I spoke to our current provider, and he has made mention that he could use that property if we were, in the event we could get that place cleaned up. And we could, we could create some revenue there. So, I don't know.
I think to waste three, three or four more months writing another letter, it's not going to have anything happen.
How much is in that pot?
Forty.
Do you think forty would clean it up?
I don't know. It's pretty bad. But I think it threw a good portion of it.
Didn't we get some insurance money?
We also asked for insurance money, too. The place needs to be cleaned, and also the structure itself, you actually need to replace the, it needs to be reskinned.
We do have $135,000 in insurance. FEMA has not finalized their calculation. The current estimate from FEMA is 136, but again, that's not final. So that would be $270,000 if FEMA's number held for both those facilities there together.
Could we go out for bids to see what it costs to resurface or reskin the building and clean the place up? I don't think the city can do it.
I was going to say, give us, give us to the next meeting. Remember, I suggested now that we've got clearance from our attorney, let's let our staff look at as far as what we think we could possibly do to clean it up and to skin it out. Yes, you would definitely have to go out to bid for that. But let us, if you will, just save this to the next meeting, if you will, and give us time to go out there and look at it and get together with our staff to figure out what, what we think we could possibly do, because it is a maze.
One, one thing that me and Mr. Denell spoke about is, you know, if there was a way it could be designed where he could use, at best use for him, you may want to include him in going out there and seeing, you know, what, what he might need. He mentioned some place to work on his truck and such, so.
Sounds good. Now that we've got clearance to move forward on it, now we need to get a plan as to what we can do to get that house cleaned up.
I lean toward using the money to start cleaning it up. Anybody want to send another letter?
Okay.
That's more to that. Yeah, let's, let's work.
We'll give us a plan together.
Okay, great, great. It's sitting there as a revenue producer that's not generating revenue.
Yep, and it looks horrible.
It does. What was, what were they paying us? Wasn't it $2,000 a month?
$2,000.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, sir. Whole business, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir. The first item is the government complex grant. Mayor, you want to give us an update of what we have?
Yeah, we got great news this, this past weekend, that St. Joe Company's agreed to sell us our, our first choice of property for the amount of money that we were given by the DEO grant. We're currently waiting from, hear from DEO that they'll let us use the entire amount on the purchase. And if that's the case, we'll, we move forward, and this property, I think I mentioned at past meetings, it's the old ball field property right off of Langston Drive between First Street and Avenue A. It's a great piece of property. It's centrally located. I think it'd be a good choice for us. It'll also help us go out for grants to actually build, build a new government complex. It's, the main thing we have to do is, once we agree on the purchase, we need to have it surveyed before we sign anything with the St. Joe folks. I think it says 15 days from the time that we sign this, we have to have a survey. So we need to go ahead and survey it before we sign it, and go from there. So that's where we are. The purchase amount is the amount that we got from DEO, which is $312,500. So it's, based on the appraisal, it's, it's a very good price.
Have we spent any of that money yet?
No, sir. I did have a brief conversation with DEO before this meeting. Finally made contact with them. Indications are that what we need to be done is you would have to have an amendment to that agreement on there. What they would like to see is a plan that we're going to continue on with this process. The initial grant said that we would deliverable, number one, would be purchase a piece of property, number two, that do some engineering work and do some architectural work. We do realize that's not going to be the money to do all those things. So we have to send that to them to get their approval. So what I would suggest is if you want to go ahead with the contract moving forward, make it contained on approval from DEO and the survey will be recommended.
We also, Jim, we, God, I lost the train of thought there for a minute. Alright, $314,500 amount, I mean, it's a golden opportunity for us, and we need to, we need to buy that piece of property, irregardless of if we can't use it all, even though I think they will. I think we need to let them know that the Ferguson group, we're going to give them a task order to go after some of that 718 million CDBG to build it. So with all that in there, I think we'll be successful. But still, I appreciate St. Joe Company working with us. George Gonzalez has been very generous in, in working with us, and I don't, we don't need to let this slip by.
I completely agree with that.
And Mayor, this asking process, about half the case, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a great deal.
Yep. So what did you say? You want, you want just?
I'd like to have a motion to, to purchase the property, and we, we got to have a, you know, with a survey attached to that, to purchase it for that amount of money. Roll the dice that DEO's going to, going to let us use all of it, which I think they will.
I'm fine with rolling the dice on that piece, but what about the, the survey piece? Do you, do you want to wait on the survey?
I think if we vote, vote to accept the purchase agreement, we need to go ahead with the survey.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the contract with St. Joe Company for a purchase of property for a new city complex. And are you including in the list in the survey?
Right, within 15 days.
Before we sign the, before we sign the agreement?
Yes.
We need to have a survey.
Yes, absolutely.
To make sure, because it's, it's a big piece of property, and I want to make sure it's all like it looks up front.
Additional comment, Mayor?
Oh, okay.
In Section 2, the second paragraph, just so we're all on the same page, it says, "As an initial consideration to conveyance of property to seller or buyer, the buyer hereby waives any and all claims, demands, or payments with respect to obligations of the seller providing fire apparatus, fire equipment, or construction of new facilities." This, Commissioner Hoffman, goes back to the $200,000?
I'm clear on that.
Okay.
I'll waive all future arguments that they owe us the money on a deal like this.
It's, yeah, I think.
I saw they snuck that in there.
I mean, you can look at it and kind of think, well, they just paid us the money.
It's still a good deal.
I mean, it's a good deal, so let's move forward.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Langston?
Just any change?
Yeah. Okay. Anybody from all in? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, most pass five and o.
Oh, and that item is my contract. My contract is up for consideration of three year.
Okay, I think everybody's got a folder from the city manager. His contract's up for another three, is it?
Yeah.
Three years, and I'll open floor for discussion of that.
I've got a suggestion, if now is the time, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to discuss some, what I consider positive changes to the contract, and I would ask the support of the, of the commissioners, at least to consider it.
All right, where is that?
I would like to start under Paragraph 3 on the annual base pay. I did some studying in the last few days on cities, pretty much the same size, some smaller. Mexico Beach just hired a city administrator at 90,000. We're somewhere around 3,400 people. They're just over 1,000. That's based on 2010 census. Not only is it 90,000, but within 12 months, they can increase that person's salary by 5,000. So I think it's fair to say they'll probably be at 95,000. The city of St. Joe is fortunate to have someone that is from St. Joe, families from St. Joe, and is doing an amazing job for the city of St. Joe. I think if we don't consider raising the salary on this next three years, we're going to be in a position where we're not keeping up with the other cities. It will be a training ground. A lot, you can look at a lot of the state agencies. They train people for actions, law enforcement, and then they move to other places. I think now is the time to look at paying our city manager at a fair rate, and also compensating him for the other items I just mentioned. So as far as Paragraph 3, I would like support of increasing the salary at 7%. That would take it at 96,323.97. I'd like to consider upping the annual leave to, from 120 to 160. The city of St. Joe is capped at 120 hours for all employees, and once you reach a certain amount of longevity, you can't go up at all. If I'm here for another term, I plan on looking at, at the personnel book and hoping that we can get support to carry that out a little further. I think you shouldn't be capped at 120. What's actually happening in the city is you have people that's been with the city for a long time. They're not only capped at 120, some of them are not even able to take off the 120 hours, and you lose it. So, but as far as this position, I would ask support for going above the 120 cap and going to 160 hours annual leave. The last item that I would ask you to consider would be on number seven, the last page. It would read Anderson's employment may be terminated at the will of the city by a two-thirds vote, supermajority vote. In other words, it would take four people sitting up here to vote to terminate that contract. Currently, it's just a simple majority. Those are the items that I would like to offer for change.
All right, thank you, sir. Everybody understand what changes we'd like to make, and we need to hear from others if you'd like to speak on it.
Mayor, I think, I think that everything that Scott said is absolutely the truth, and I think that I can support this if we do due diligence this next budget season to try to figure out how to make a more livable wage for our city employees all the way down, from the smallest level up. We are not competitive in this community, and it's not just city managers going to look in for jobs other places. It's your city crews that get better opportunities on this as well.
I agree 100%.
Our police department's underpaid, our city work, public works is underpaid, the water plant, everybody. You can't live in this town for what we're paying.
Well, in order to do pay increases fairly and have sense about it, and to not find yourself in a retention area, is you have to start either at the very bottom, and then everyone goes up, or you start at the very top, and then you adjust as you come down. It just so happens that today we're faced with a contract of the person at the top.
Sure, and he wouldn't be affected by the changes we would make in October because he's a contractor.
Right. And as far as the budget, I did check with Mike, our budget expert, and the money is available based on several positions in the city that are currently unsealed. So we're not spending that money. So I don't foresee the, I think it's 6,000, somewhere in there. I don't think that's going to affect the budget in a negative way.
I think one thing we're probably, we may want to consider next, next budget cycle is maybe a pain class study. That would help tremendously across the board in looking at all the salaries.
I think the league collects that data. I think they have that on your survey, Jim, every year, so you can get that from the league.
Great idea.
I agree with the 7%, 7% increase, but 120 hours of annual leave, I think we should try to adjust that at a later time if we can do that. I would like to see all employees change that, if we can change all employees at, at one time from that 120 to 160. But the increase in pay per year, annual pay per year, I totally agree with that.
And I'm fine with that, the, the change to take the time to look at a fair way where it goes across the board. That'd be fine.
Yeah, I think, too, that when you, when you bump everybody across the board, it, it's, I mean, it leaves you with possibly some unfunded liability. So I would want to make sure that, that was funded. But I'm fine with that, if that's wishes.
So what I'm hearing is salary increase and the two-thirds, the supermajority for termination. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add to that?
Good.
We need to...
Has anybody asked the city manager if he wants to continue working with us?
I think I have given us this.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did, but, yes, sir.
Actually, his proposal was four-fifths, not two-thirds.
Was it?
It was two-thirds, which would be, according to what I researched.
He said four out of five commissioners.
He had four votes.
Four fifths.
Yes.
Yeah. So do we need to draw this up again, or do we get the agreement of the city manager that's okay with him?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the, for the consideration on here. I do love our little town. I do appreciate everything y'all've done for me. Yes, that would be tremendous. Thank you.
Jim did a wonderful job leading us right after the storm, as well as what he's always done in the past, but that, that was really exemplary of what, what you've done there and what you plan to do.
Do we need to put this in a form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make the motion to, to increase the salary 7% and to change the termination clause to two-thirds vote, the five, which is a count of four, correct?
You got, you accept the contract?
Yes.
With those changes?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Is there any further discussion?
Second, we're discussing.
I just have one question for our attorney. Can we supersede our voting policies by this contract? Because I think in our, in our charter, it says that everything requires a majority vote unless there are certain stipulations, there's only certain things that require a majority vote.
I think you can supersede this particular employment contract.
Okay.
With this particular employee.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Discussion from the audience?
Yes, sir.
All in.
Last question.
Yes, sir, come up.
Yes, sir.
Say your name and sign in.
All right. You already, you already know my name.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, the only question for attorney that I have is budget, would there be money in the budget to cover the increase? I'm not objecting to the, the increase, but I'm concerned, is that gonna cause taxes and other service increase to cover this here?
I think our financial guy, you want to speak to that one?
No, we, we didn't specifically budget the $6,000 increase for Jim's salary. That would be prorated for the, the amount of months left in this fiscal period, uh, and we do have some five to six employees or vacant positions in the general fund that have not been filled for the first three months of this fiscal year. So, overall, in the general fund, we have the, the salaries and benefits to, to cover this increase, and certainly we can handle the budgeting it without any tax increase for next year.
Okay. And you also mentioned by some position, there's not being a field that you're gonna capture that money from. Are those positions ever gonna be, uh, uh, filled? Will we enumerate those positions?
We feel like we'll have them filled at some point in time, but maybe not this budget year.
Not this particular budget year?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those same sign, most of the past five, oh? And, uh, Jim, you've got the unanimous support of the board. Appreciate what you've done.
Very thank you.
We think they'll never be the same, but it will be better, and we look forward to you leading us there, so we'll be right behind you and, uh, look forward to it.
Well, thank you for the vote of confidence, and I look forward to working for each other.
All right, folks, let's move on to the next item, and that is, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, sir. The next item we had, we had a brief discussion a few minutes ago in reference to parcel number 04786. This is in reference to an access road, uh, to a piece of property that's actually under contract, and they would like to actually place an ice machine on the property. We had a potential buyer here today, Mr. Henry Rackley, that would like to, to talk to you about it.
Okay, please come forward, sir. Mr. Rackley, would you like to speak to the board?
I would.
Okay. State your name, please, and sign in.
My name's Henry Rackley. I'm from a little town called Bakington, Georgia, which is in South Georgia. Um, I'm in the ice business. I was, uh, turned 72 today. I've been, my family was in the garment business for 49 years, and that's gone away, so my brother and I got in the ice business. We've got 18 ice houses in South Georgia and South Alabama, and I bought two, one here at Gans Barbecue and one at Mexico Beach, Mr. Earl Nichols, uh, passed away about three months ago. Um, I'm looking for another location to put one in Port St. Joe, uh, closer to the marina, and I found a lot up here on the corner of Fourth and 98, right there, uh, between, uh, used to be Smiley's and the highway. Um, it's got, the city owns a 15-foot, uh, I guess it's easy, but they own a 15-foot strip there. Uh, the sidewalk takes up approximately 10 feet of that, so there's a five-foot strip between the edge of the sidewalk and the street. There's a, there's a driveway there already, so I, number one, I was asking if I could have a, a right-of-way, if I rent the lot or buy the lot, to use that drive, driveway that's already there. Uh, number two, I was asking if I could put an ice house there. Uh, it's on a commercial lot, uh, there was an ice house right behind it, at Smiley's. Uh, I believe Mr. Nichols told me that when he put the house down at Gans, uh, that he had to build a building around it, and that was, uh, I don't know, about 12 years ago, I think. Uh, in the meantime, I put one in behind Smiley's that didn't what required. So, my question is, is number one, if I could put the house there, and if, if they were put it there, to be able to use the five-foot strip for my access off of 98. It's got an access on the alley behind it, uh, but I, it'd be kind of tough for folks to get it out there. Uh, on the west side, it's got two light poles and a, uh, CD hydrant, and then a water meter there, so you couldn't use the west side of the lot for entrance. The only place you could use would be 98, or you'd come in from the alley. Um, I got a few pictures of ice houses that I have, if you guys wanted to see them to know what I was talking about, I, I didn't know, I mean, I think most of you guys know what an ice house is. Uh, anyway, that was, that was my questions I had for the board today.
Okay. All right. Discussion? Anybody got any comments? So, there's no, you're saying there's no access on Fourth Street?
Uh, I've got it. I've got a, uh, this is what I got from my... This is the lot here.
Yeah, we've got that.
Okay, and, well, there's a 15-foot strip there, I mean, a strip, but the sidewalk takes up 10 feet of it. So, we're talking about between the front of the lot and the edge of the sidewalk would be five feet. The driveway is right there, and then, of course, over here, it's a 20-foot alley, that's, that's where you'd have access there and there. That's, that's the two. Up, up this side is, you can't come in at all there because of the power poles and the guide wires and, and the, uh, water terminal and all.
So, you're talking about right off of 98?
That's correct.
And there's already a drive cut in there, and it goes through the sidewalk, and it just turns into a gravel, gravel drive.
My, my, uh, personal opinion, and, and, well, actually, opinion of some others, Mr. Rackley, is that we've, we've worked long and hard, uh, for well over 10 years to make the tourist corridor along 98 a, uh, acceptable, nice, aesthetic, uh, place for folks when they ride down to, uh, stop, shop, so forth, and, and I just don't think of, an ice machine right down that corner, right on 98, is the appropriate place for one. Uh, I know we've got one down, uh, Avenue D and 98, sitting back off the road.
Yeah, that's mine, too.
Yeah, sitting back off the road, but, but, uh, I, I just, uh, I just don't feel comfortable putting an ice machine right up there on Highway 98.
So, that's, is that your opinion?
That's just my opinion, sir. My personal...
Now, my question's this, though, is if, if I don't put it there, and somebody else comes to report to board, are they gonna be able to put one there?
Well, it's whatever the board votes for.
Okay, I understand.
That, I mean, it's a vote of the board, but I'm just, I'm just saying, my, my personal opinion is I'd rather not see an ice ma, the machine, uh, ice house sitting on, on the aisle.
Well, the question I got is, is it, that's right between two marinas. There needs to be something there for the people to come in to use the marinas, you know, access to that. That's, that's the only reason I want to put it there.
Yes.
To be honest with you, Port St. Joe is 3,400 people, and normally, it won't support but one ice house. But, situation with Port St. Joe, you got the ocean, so it would support two.
True.
And that's the reason I want to put it there, because if I don't, somebody else is.
Well, somebody else might put one in town, I guess, but, but, and it's up to the board if they, if they would, will.
I have another question, uh, first, uh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Uh, my question is, are we considering the lease agreement, which is at $0? Um, and the reason I ask, you weren't here at the last meeting, but we discussed, uh, we had received a letter from, uh, the owners, attorney, asking for the city to donate the land, and, uh, that didn't, it happened because, you know, we've, we've not inhabited donating land, so the question came up, well, what has the city done in the past when they've had a request like this? And so now, instead of a, a donation, it's a, a lease agreement. Um, look, we've entered into the discussion at that meeting about reaching out to our real estate person that represents the city and figuring out what the fair value of the land was worth. Um, I guess you could take the sale price of the property and divide it by the square footage of what the city owns. Uh, I think that would be fair, because the value, I would argue, would be higher where the city's property is, because it's right on the highway. Um, but I don't really believe we've done that at this point. So, my question would be, are we looking at the lease agreement, or are we looking and talking about how a ice machine and an ATM machine would look on Highway 98?
I think that's the main, uh, main purpose of, of his, uh...
Yeah, I wouldn't be interested in the property if I couldn't put...
Okay, that's, that's really what I needed to know.
The problem with that property is it's so small, you know, it's not, it's 75 by 90, you know, you can't put, uh, you know, a restaurant there or anything, it's just not big enough.
Right.
Limited, you know, if you use it for a car lot, I think that's what it was at one time. Uh, I went back on Google Earth and looked all the way back on 1990. I didn't see anything on the lot, you know, for the last 30 years.
Yeah, well, and I'm, my, my feeling and my stance is gonna be what I said when we received the letter of asking for the city to donate the land. Um, I don't really own the land, neither does the gentleman sitting up here, the people in the back of the room owning it, you know, just obviously, and we couldn't give it away, and I don't think we can.
I, I understand, I'm not asking, that was the owners, I'm...
Right, but, but you're asking us to enter into a lease that shows the value.
Well, it's easy, really, what I was interested in.
The way I understand it, the lease is between you and the owners.
That's correct, yeah.
Our property's out of the question, they just want to make sure that we're not gonna build a 10-foot wall block in their view if they put an ice machine.
Okay.
I just want to be able to cause that use that entrance in and out. And, you know, I don't really have a problem if I was to lease it, I, you know, I could pay something to the city for the use of the driveway, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that, because, I mean, you know, it's your land. But, the main thing I need to find out is, you guys will, you can put it there, because I've been looking for a spot now since last year, and it kind of stuck fine down here.
We had another gentleman, man, been the gentleman you referred to, come to the, to the city and asked if the city would lease him property down by the fish cleaning table.
Right.
And we talked about how we would have to go out for bids, and then if we did that, and we entered into such a lease, then the, the next person's gonna wanna lease a little corner for a hot dog stand.
That's right, I understand, I, I, I mean, I know you got a responsibility to the city, so I, I was just, don't hurt ass.
Have you had problems in other areas where people did not want an ice machine in a part of town?
No, most of them, most of them wanted that because the citizens want, uh, hogging the Georgia, is, I've got six up there, and they, um, they passed the ordinance, well, I don't know if they passed because of me, but, in ordinance, you can't put an ice house in front of a, like a little strip mall, where you can't put it in front, you gotta put it beside it or behind it, and that kind of killed a bunch of that. Of course, they got the downtown section of all many, you can't, you can't put one in there because they want it to look like old town or whatever. Uh, that's really the only one that I've had a problem with. I, all the other towns, I used to go in and get a permit, you know, they pay approval and I said it.
I think the reason why we're all concerned is, is because of the visibility from 98. If it were back where it used to be, you have a hard time seeing it, which is the same reason why it'll be good for you to be on 98, is because you have that visibility of boat traffic passing by. Uh, this is kind of a catch-22. We don't want to see it, but you need people to see it by an ice.
Right, I understand, I, I know exactly what you're saying, play it.
Yeah, a good placement was the last one. That was, that got destroyed during the hurricane, um, and it was huge. It was, a lot of times I went to it and it was out.
I know, I talked to the gentleman, the, uh, the veteran right behind it, and he, he told me right quick, like, I'd be in court if I put one there. I ain't, I ain't, I don't want to go through there. I'm just a little country boy, trying to live.
See, I, I would, I would prefer, actually, if we're going to support an ice machine, I mean, I would go back to the previous discussion about where, where is the best place to have it? The best place is down there by the fish cleaning table. Maybe we should entertain the idea of looking into that and going out for bids and allowing you to bid on...
I don't have a problem with that, if there's enough room down there, you know, for people, for traffic, uh, that's the big thing with ice houses, you know, most times you got one customer, two, but then sometimes when it's real busy, you got, you know, trucks with a lawnmower or a boat, you know, and it's saying, oh, you got, you know, there's just not enough room there, and I, I don't want, I don't want there to be enough room there. I'm, I'm not familiar with that fish cleaning place.
What's the footprint of your ice house?
It's eight, it's eight by 24, eight foot, eight foot four inches wide and 24 long.
Uh, Commissioner Hoffman, I don't have a problem with looking at, at another alternative forum to put his ice machine.
Right.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I think we, there's a need for the ice. Uh, I've, I've had people say, when they saw us build the fish cleaning table, and it's just to the right of the bug land.
Yeah.
Uh, that was one of the questions.
I don't have a problem, you know, I, you know, I just want to put one out. It's three hours from me down here, and I've got two ice houses, I'm trying to put one here and another one a little farther west. It's pretty tough to find a lot.
I just, I just can't support it there on the highway. I've had too many people mention it.
I understand, right, there's a reason.
The thing, the thing about it is it's not, um, it, it, to me, it's not the, the sight of it being there, I think it's more about all the traffic that, that's gonna be in that area when you, when you put an ice machine there, when people pulling up with boats and, and things like that right there off, off, off 98. If it was back a little further, um, I would support it, but the area that it's in right now, I don't think that'd be good for, for, um, all the commotion that it's gonna cause in that, that small, that small area.
That's a good point.
Because then you got people, I'm telling you, when, when, when it's time to go fishing and, and Scotty Festival and all that.
That's where I want to put one here.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the, what it's gonna cause, the conjunction that's gonna cause in that area. Um, it, it's, it's gonna be, um, crazy, it's gonna be hectic, but a little bit further back, I, I would support it if it was off the highway.
Got you. Okay, so, consensus of the board? Uh, we do have some discussion from the audience, uh, please come up. Take your name, sign the book.
I will state my name.
And sign the book.
Sign the book. Uh, I want to remind, uh, board, uh, we did the other, the, the ice house is down by the barbecue place, Gans Barbecue. We required them to build a building around it for the aesthetic purposes, because it was on the tourist card. If you don't require someone, Mr. Rackley or whomever, to do that, you're running, you're, you're facing the wrath of whoever was required to build that other one, so I would encourage you to keep that provision. If it's on the tourist card of 98, it's gotta be aesthetically pleasing, whatever's there.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay, so, unless I hear a motion, it, it sounded like at the present time, we, we will be, uh, against having an ice house on 98, at least properly. All right. Sorry, Mr. Rackley, but...
Well, let me ask you this, he, he brought up a question, if I put a building around it, would that change anything?
I don't, I wasn't on the board at that time, I, I, you know, I, I, I think it's just not a good place for it. Okay, okay, let's move on to new business.
Yes, sir. The first time we have is...
Yes, sir, the first time we have is a lighthouse lease agreement, it's Linda Woods here today to talk to you about it.
When you have a copy of a proposed lease, this lease actually was prepared by Mr. Cagell a few years ago. Couple of, um, some minor changes in it, but, um, other than that, we're, we're ready to move forward at the lighthouse complex with getting, um, the Eglin Building set up as a maritime museum and for display of the ruins that came out of the lighthouse. And in order to do that, we need possession of the buildings.
Okay, all right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I thought we'd already done it, Mayor, to be honest with you.
I did too, and I talked to Jim today and said nothing was ever finalized, so...
Motion approved.
Okay, so most, most, I can approve a lease agreement with a historical society, everybody had a chance to look over it, and if you're comfortable with it, uh, uh, we can further discussion.
Attorney's good with it?
Uh, you like, she stated, I wrote this lease a few years ago, as long as you guys are happy with the twenty-five-year term and the rent amount and, you know, the terms such as that, I think we're probably moved around and changed from what I remember that, legally, this lease is fine.
Okay, all righty, further discussion, discussion room forward, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, most pass five oh, and...
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys taking care of it for us.
Yes, sir, Mayor, the next item we have is a reference to the rate study task quarter. Uh, what we have started looking at is the rates based on your ordinance, uh, during the last year of them. So what we have before you today, we went out and asked for, uh, a plan that would cover everything. The proposal in front of you, we cover, uh, proposals to look at your water rates, your sewer rates, impact fees, and wholesale water rate. We've never looked at all this at one time, uh, this is just a start from what we're to look at. It is expensive, uh, I think the total is around forty-two thousand dollars, uh, we didn't have that much in the budget, we were kind of shocked at how much it was gonna be, but we got it for you today to, to start the process to see exactly what the board would like to see in a rate study.
Uh, I had long talked to Jim this morning on, on the rate study, it's, it's not broken out as to what each task is gonna cost us, uh, but at the same time, I thought about, do we really need them? And, uh, I think we can get along another year without even having one, I would, I would, I would even consider not having one at all this year. We could continue with the, uh, uh, increases that they proposed, uh, the last time they did one, which I think is a three percent increase for, across the board this year. Uh, I would even, I would even consider a little less than that, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape right now, think another twelve months will really show us where we are, but, uh, I would, uh, I'm not sure I would, uh, be wanting one this year.
I mean, Mayor, I kinda get where you're coming from, but because of the storm, I think now's the opportune time to find out where we stand, and maybe it doesn't need to be a three percent increase because of the, the, either the increase or decrease in customers we have, I kinda need to reset that baseline, but I get what you're saying, it's a lot of money, uh, but we need to know where we stand, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of argument about our impact fees being high, um, I'd like to know whether they are or not, you know, I'd really like to have a definitive answer on that, and if we can work it out, I'd love to see that, although I'm just gonna keep asking for reductions, get voted down.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Ashbrook, I mean, the main thing I hear is the, are high impact fees and, and I hate to deter away, uh, new business to the area, um, and that's, that's just the number one thing I hear, um, but I just, not sure what everybody wants to do today, but, um, I'm sure everybody hears that.
It's eight or nine thousand dollars to hook up a new residence, is that close to accurate?
And, and I think Jim, on our discussion this, this morning, is, was, once you go over that two-inch line on the commercial side, you started it in high fees, correct?
Yes, sir, if you look at your impact fees, they're, they're not real high based on a individual house or a, uh, a mom and pop store, but if you start looking at industry, you start looking at a two-inch and above, they do escalate, yes, sir.
And I, I do know one of the things that we wanted to determine was, uh, what our wholesale water rate should be, uh, and, and I was thinking and talking about it a little bit and realizing that through all this process, increasing all the retail customers' rates, we never touched the wholesale rate. And I, I mean, the wholesale, retail rate, they both should incur increases because everything goes along with it, goes up.
Costs is costing.
So, I mean, I, I understand that we've got, we've just really got one wholesale customer now, we may end up getting more, but, uh, but somehow we, we, we need to know what that is, uh, but forty-three thousand dollars is a lot of money, I, I'd see it broken out so we can at least get it inside what our budget is.
Mayor, Mike did have a conversation, I believe, this morning, he showed me a little glimpse of information before the meeting, maybe I'll shed some light on some of that for you.
Yes, I, I did discuss it with the consultants and, and we've never done a full scope rate study that included the, the wholesale water rate or the, the impact fee review in, in the same process. I asked them to, to revise the fees by removing, uh, the impact fee summary and the, and the bulk wholesale rate, uh, and some of their travel expenses for, for meetings, for final presentations, um, and, and removing the impact fee summary, uh, and the, and the rates brought us down to twenty-eight, eight.
But what I'm hearing up here, we need the wholesale rate and we need the impact fee study, so...
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Can we eliminate everything else and what you're talking about?
Well, the financial management plan is the bulk of the work.
Yeah.
And, and it's the driver that, that has been used the last five years for us to, to ensure we were meeting our debt obligation with our, with our, our region's loan and with, and so forth. Uh, so, so the financial management plan is, is, I think, vitally important to the, to, to the long-term future and us projecting. Uh, I think there is some senses that we do need to revise our baseline, I agree with that comment. I'm not in, in total objection to, to delaying it for a year, I certainly wouldn't wanna do it for more than that, um, but we did not budget forty-two thousand, we didn't anticipate this cost.
What did we budget?
We only budgeted, and, and it was a budgeting error on my part, it was only budgeted for fifteen K, which was, uh, the, the review process. So the full rate study, when we did it six years ago, uh, or five years ago, was twenty-four, and then we did a subsequent periodic review and that was fifteen. So, so we had a, a miss on, I missed on that in the budget, I only put fifteen in the budget, um, you know, so, so that's a problem.
And one thing we, we forget about is, when we approve this study, it puts tremendous amount of work on our office staff to accumulate all this stuff, they don't just come in and do it all for us for forty-three, we supply them with, with all the data, and we're in the throes of trying to get our FEMA money, our insurance money, Mike's working on that, Jim, Charlotte, all of the above, uh, so I was thinking, gosh, if we can just put it off a year, maybe get caught up on all those things, then, uh, we might be in better shape, but it's, it's a big burden on these guys to put all that together.
It, it is, and I, I wouldn't object again to delaying it a year, but I certainly wouldn't wanna go any further than that. I really think it's vitally important for us to continue to project forward and plan for, for our financial future and especially with our debt obligations and, and us trying to be able to reduce that debt, uh, when our current loan balloons in two years' time, you know, we really need to be, uh, prepared and thinking about our futures, so, so...
I support the study, I think we need to study because we need to be able to articulate why we charge so much for water. We charge, uh, in my mind, a very high rate for our water.
Yes.
And, and most people in the city don't understand why we charge that, uh, you have to go through the process and look back in time when, uh, I, in my opinion, a very bad decision was made by the people that set up here years ago when they approved, well, I believe it was a twenty million dollar, uh, new water plant or wind mark, and, uh, and we're having to pay for that, and, and that's just it. So, uh, I support the idea of the study, hoping that it will tell us we can reduce the rate, I don't know that that'll happen, uh, but you can't defend something unless you have the data to prove, you know, you have a valid argument. So I think we need to have the study done, I do support the fact that it's not in the budget this year, putting it off till next year, we can budget for it, maybe we'll have some FEMA funds come in to help with this, uh, but I would like to hold where we are currently on the current rate and, and agree to not going up at all for the one year, and then we do the study the following year.
I like your idea, Commissioner, and I think you can go one step further, there'll be other funding sources, I don't know, Jim, have we ever asked, can impact fees be used to pay for a study?
No, sir, no.
Can we ask?
Impact fees traditionally can be used for one of two things, uh, expansion on your current system or debt service, and that's what you're the place for.
But I, I agree, if we put too much burden on staff, I'd rather y'all focus on getting the FEMA stuff buttoned up and insurance. Uh, if, if we agree to do the full study, I'm fine waiting, uh, we can ask for governmental appropriation to cover the study for us next year.
One thing we could possibly do too, it depends on timing when you wanna do it, uh, you could possibly ask for, uh, them to defer payment until October one for a portion of it, because it's gonna take months and months to do this type of study, this thing ain't gonna happen overnight, you're talking months of work on there, so something you could consider on there is that, that final balloon payment could be due and payable October one if you wanted to, that's something to consider.
I'm, I'm fine, Mr. Mayor, waiting and putting it off, um, I just wanna make sure we are mindful, if we do have a big commercial business that wants to come in, I do not wanna deter them away with a, with a high impact fee, uh, that's my major concern.
I agree, John.
Uh, Mike, you say you budgeted fifteen thousand this year for...
That's correct, yes.
And, and when you did that, what, what, what did you have in mind?
Well, in, in the past, we had done just a preliminary review of, of the rate study, this is a full rate study from top to bottom, uh, so I just missed on that, that was just an error on my part.
What does, what does that preliminary review consist of?
Well, when we paid, when we did the, the preliminary review, it didn't require, like Rex said, the full year of data collection.
Okay.
Uh, and, and they didn't go back, uh, you know, they were just looking at the current rates, uh, and, and reviewing based on, on current data, it wasn't a full review, it was just a partial review that I budgeted for by mistake, you know.
Um, is that, how much work is that, is, uh, if we did that review, would that, um, give us any kind of, um, understanding of what, what, um, what's going on with this total, um, thing, or it's just, it's just a...
That's a good point.
Or it's just a, um, something that they normally do without giving that data?
No, the, the partial review, I'm not sure if we could go back to them and, and well, basically what we'd be saying is we just wanna look at the financial management plan and not look at the, the bulk water rate or competitive rates or the, or the impact fee. I don't know, it's something I can present to them, we can discuss it and bring it back to the next meeting and have discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can do that and then maybe we won't have to do that next year, you know, just, just something, I was just throwing out there, I was just thinking about this, so...
Yeah, the key one that expires this year is currently is your five-year plan, your impact fees were set up that, they don't expire, they, they were not set up on a five-year plan, it was, they gave a number on there, so those could be done today, tomorrow, next week, or next year. Your, your, your water and your sewer rates were based on a five-year interval, so you have an ordinance that's set up that said, okay, in fifteen, they were gonna be this, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Let us go back and talk with them to see what our options are, I would suggest let's table it to the next meeting, in that way we can all talk and we can see what we can come back with.
That's a good idea thrown out, I think that's good.
Come on, just real quick, are we tied to StanTech or are they a single source? Why is this company always the one that does it?
What you had was initially, uh, Andy, Andy Burnham was the one that actually put this plan together, so I give a lot of credit to Andy helping with financial stability of City of Port St. Joe, back in two thousand and ten, he actually, uh, worked with Burton and Associates, now he's over with StanTech, so it's the same gentleman, he is actually with a different company, but this gentleman, he done tremendous work for the city that helped us in a, in a, in a very, uh, good light for the financial stability of the city, so I would, I speak highly of Andy.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but how do we get around the bidding rules on, should this go out for bid because of the threshold?
Because you have them under, you have StanTech under a continuing services contract.
Okay, okay, and then my, my next question is, I was under the impression when I first got on this board that we were required by Regions Bank to do a study every five years, is that not the case?
I would, I would argue that they're gonna come back and wanna see that again. Right now, you're not actually refinancing your loan or anything, but could they ask for that? Yes, sir, absolutely, and they, they have the right to look at your ordinance on there because that is what's placed for repayment on the loan.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the repayment and the debt obligation has specific requirements that we meet certain revenue thresholds, and that's how you calculate that with the rate study, so there is that language in the loans that require us to meet the certain revenue threshold.
So if they ask for it this year, we wouldn't have it, but we could always say we're planning to work on it next year?
That's correct.
Okay.
But there's no reason we can't go out and bid for a rate study.
Sure.
I mean...
That's a lot of money, twenty-six to forty-something.
I, I agree, and so I, uh, think that's something we think about, I mean, but Andy, I mean, he's a sharp cookie, I'm telling you, he's something else. All right, that's been tabled, so here's, uh, talking about impact fee, we got a reduction request, Jim?
Yes, sir, here's your turn, page forty-nine, you have a new proposed subdivision that's coming, uh, that you did the large-scale plan amendment on for eighty-four units, they are asking for a twenty-five percent reduction on impact fees from the city.
Yeah, I think we, uh, that's happened before, uh, I think going along with what Commissioner Lowry talks about is, uh, we don't wanna stifle development because of our impact fees, but as I said in the last meeting, if we, I would like to see if we grant a fever waiver, if, if we grant it, it's only after the, the development is fully developed, uh, and then we give them, once it's fully developed, they gotta close an order, we give them the twenty-five percent of that back. Is that clear to you?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, so even if we talked to Paces last week about it, it seemed like they didn't have a real problem with it, uh, so, uh, I mean, fair for us, fair for them, so, uh, entertain a motion for, uh, for this request.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Hopman for a twenty-five percent waiver of impact fees for D three V Labs, which is an eighty-four unit development, it's basically right across the street. Is there a second?
No.
I, I was just gonna say, Mayor, I don't know if I have to abstain because David's not the owner of the, of the pud, but I'm going to, to be safe, it'll make the attorney's job a lot easier if I abstain.
Yeah, okay, was there a second, Commissioner Langston? Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Hopman, seconded by Commissioner Langston. Discussion, any more discussion?
Well, I think we need to make sure that we're clear on, this motion will include when they receive the...
Reduction.
Reduction, it's at the end, that way it precludes a developer from virtually selling the, the savings.
It's a rebate, not a...
Yeah, and I think I'd also like to include, so we're all on the same page, uh, when we approved the, uh, reduction in fee to the ship program, we were clear to specify it's only, we were only waiving the impact fee, and Jim helped me here to, we, we were real specific on what they were getting the reduction in, it's not anything other than the impact fee, it's not the...
The fee and all.
Right, and the labor and all those things, so I just, we'll make sure that we're clear on that.
Okay, is that motion clear to everyone? Okay, discussion from the audience, all in favor, aye? O, same sign, most pass four oh and one abstention.
Uh, the next item we have is the rest of the surplus property, uh, Vania Pelham, our computer tech, is just about finished installing all of our new computers, we have a stack... We have a stack of old equipment that needs to be surplus to dispose of.
Do you have to dispose of it, as in like, throw it away, or can we donate after we approved the surplus?
If you could find a church, or you could find a non-for-profit that could use it, yes, we could. In the past, we've tried. We've tried to give it away to churches and to schools, but anymore, most of the people don't want to fool with it, because we had to pull the hard drives out, and there's a couple hundred dollars involved in it, and they can go buy another computer. So, this would actually be, recommendation at this point would be to turn it over to a company like Green Circle that would actually dispose of them.
Well, and I'm fine with that, as long as we check. I know that there's an after-school program, I forget what the building is called, but it's by the gym, Peters Park, you know, that some ladies do after-school, and they were asking for some used computers.
Is that the program that's many likely to be done?
Yes, yes.
All right, I tell you what, we can ask her, if that after-school program would utilize them on the, yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, because maybe we could work with the school, because I know someone that does IT for the school, and she has told me that there's times that they have maybe hard drives or monitors, they like.
If you can, if you can get one me tomorrow and put me in contact with those folks, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, you need a motion to dispose of surplus property?
Yes, sir, it has to be approved by the board again.
So, you need a motion to dispose of surplus property that's presented in your agenda packet, second, Commissioner Lowery. Discussion, all in favor, aye. Aye-o, same sign, motion passed, five and o.
The next item we have is a reference to parking ordinance. We have a letter from your PSJRA director with some suggestions on the parking, and what I've also provided with you was a previous parking orders we had a reference to overnight parking for you to start the discussion process.
I feel like we need to do something about it, Mayor.
We do, we need to try something.
I think, I think that if it's a little impact to the beauty of Reed Avenue, if we can get away with one sign for block with the arrows, say Reed Avenue, then you got to talk about the time. Is it a two-hour limit? Is it a three-hour limit? The alleys, I love his suggestion for the alleys, just call it 20-minute time. That'll stop people from parking their trucks in the alley and going and eating lunch.
Whatever we do, I'd like to have a workshop before we vote on something. I want to make sure all the merchants are aware of something we might vote on that will affect them, even though this should be positive. You'll have some that won't particularly like it, but anyway, we need to be very, very transparent on this, make sure everybody's aware of what we're about to do.
Something else I'd like to mention, as always, when dealing with an ordinance of this such, you always have the enforcement mechanism of what is going to be the penalty and how is that going to be enforced. And I know when I was the city attorney before, I was looking into this, and I'd actually went and talked to the clerk of court, and I talked to Judge McFarland, and then, I wasn't the city attorney anymore, and I just, that was the end of that, and I haven't looked at it since. I asked Jim whether Adam had taken that forward, and apparently, he hadn't. So, we're kind of right where we were when I left off the last time.
I think it may have been voted on before I returned with a finding mechanism for golf carts violations, but it never got, obviously, taken to the clerk to put it in motion, make it official, so we would have to do the same thing with this.
Right, and we do not want to follow the guidelines or utilize the state traffic citation for parking. And the reason that we discussed it, same with the golf cart issue, we don't, we don't write uniform vehicle citation for golf carts. If we do that, it precludes our code enforcement officer, well, actually, both of them now. Richie's law enforcement, they can't be dual law enforcement and then get into city law enforcement. So, we don't want to do that. We want to utilize a standard fee based on the ordinance.
It has gone through the code enforcement mechanism? You mean, you go in front of Mel as the special magistrate?
Well, like with the golf cart, the penalty phase is first time, it's like $50, and then it goes up, and eventually, you would lose the ability to have the permit for the golf cart. But the parking's a little different.
When you penalize someone, don't, doesn't that, right, if they disagree with the citation, to go to court?
Yeah, and I believe the golf cart, you could ask for a hearing before the special master, so.
Okay, in that realm?
Yeah, yeah, right. It doesn't go into the symbol or criminal court system.
What happens if it's just a person who parks there, doesn't have any real property, doesn't own it, I just don't understand. They're from somewhere else. I don't know how you really, you had to enforce them.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about.
I mean, how you enforce stuff in the code enforcement realm is, the person owns, either, someone owns that real property, and so, you say you have to fix this particular violation in this amount of time, or you're going to be charged this amount of money per day. When they don't do it, then you can go ahead and, if that order becomes a lien on the property, you eventually can foreclose on the property. You have, there's some teeth there. I don't know how it works.
Well, in the other meeting, when it was discussed, the numbers that we were, we were presented with was, I forget what city it was, it built it weeks ago, too.
High Springs.
Yeah, they put the signs up, they wrote an ordinance, understanding that probably 80% of the people would follow just by putting the sign up and put the words out. They have never written a citation. I don't know that we write any for the golf carts. So, I think you have to move forward, just hoping that you have compliance and understanding that you really don't have a lot of teeth in the, in the ordinance if it gets pushed back on you. Anything is going to be better than what we currently have. Currently, we have people that work at a restaurant, park there for eight hours. If we can get some cooperation with that, it'd be better than what we don't. That's my feeling.
Mayor, do we want to do a workshop?
Yeah, we need to, we need to have folks notified that we're talking about two-hour parking of Reed between certain hours. I don't know what that would be, but that would be in purpose of workshop, try to get some input from the retail merchants on Reed, who it will affect, and see if we can come up to something. So, in a long time, we've been talking about it.
And one thing I brought up, Phil, at the ERA meeting, and you all were here, and I met with him afterwards, is Dr. Joe Parkinglot on Williams Avenue. In the past, it hasn't really been used, but it's starting to be used, so, and there's some overnight stuff there.
Right.
And I'd like that, to be a part of that workshop as well.
Definitely. That, yeah, I mean, a business, having a vehicle parked on, in front of their business, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. You've got three or four in town I know of right now, where will they put their equipment, I guess you would say? That's something we need to talk about.
If we set a date in the not-so-near-future, maybe April the 14th, that would give the Chamber of Commerce and Jim ample time to let people know what's going on.
April 14th, that's second Tuesday in April. Is fine with me?
What time?
Oh, yeah, what time of day?
The last time was 6:00. We got a chance to get off 6:00.
Yeah, yeah, okay. 6:00 on April 14th. We'll, we'll have a workshop. In the meantime, we need to make sure it gets on our website and Facebook page and all the above. Let folks know we're going to be talking about it. Okado, let's move on.
The last item I have, Mayor, is a reference to Resolution 2020-1, rural area of opportunity designation. This has been a tremendous benefit to the city and searching for grants, so staff recommendation that we approve Resolution 2020-1.
All righty. Got a motion for that. It sure helped us through the storm, I know that.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve Resolution 2021, it's rural area of opportunity designation. So, motion and second. Discussion, any from the audience? All in favor, aye. Aye-o, same sign, motion passed, five-o. All right, we're down to, Jim, you got anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public Works.
Mayor, in the agenda today is, I believe, a cost for an electric pump. This pump is actually for the Clifford Sims lift station. You may or may not be aware that the station has suffered a failure. We currently have a diesel pump on it right now, and we've looked at different options that we may have to convert that back to, from a temporary perspective, but basically back to electric. Unfortunately, the temporary fix, which would be just that, was just within a few thousand dollars of what you have in front of you, which is an electric pump, much like you see on First Street or 20th, which we could place and give ourselves some time to figure out what we're going to do with that, just like First and 20th. We have to do something. We do have some options right there, given the, you know, the station location with the Cape Sewer Force main, so I think there's an opportunity to change a few things. Clay and I have talked about that before, but today, I guess it's for the board's option if we would like to purchase that pump on state contract, so we can remove that diesel pump from the neighborhood.
Do we, First Street is engineered, ready to go, it's not engineered yet, 20th Street not engineered yet, now we got to do Clifford Sims. We need to get all these lift stations.
We need, we need some task orders, I think, first and foremost, from Mr. Smallwood.
I really think we need to consider giving our engineer tasks to find out what it's going to cost us, get those back in shape, instead of putting Band-Aids on everything, let's, let's try to get them fixed right. So, so, I mean, that's going to be outside of this request, but I want to continue the discussion after we decide on this. Is it in the budget?
We have, we have the funds in the budget, yes.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, okay. Motion and second to buy electric pumps for the Clifford Sims lift station, which is definitely needed. Any further discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye. Aye-o, same sign, motion passed, five and o. Now, it's not time for Clay yet, so we'll wait until Clay comes up and pile it on.
That's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions of the board for me.
Anybody got anything for John?
I've seen where the disc golf is being utilized at the lake. I've seen six people playing.
All right.
Have not seen any parking issues whatsoever, so I just want to say thank you for that look good when you put the, what is it called, nets or whole baskets?
Yeah, Reese, Andy installed those. Reese did that, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's surprising, I've seen people the last three days walking around throwing on discs. It's encouraging.
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, you can't really know that some are really subdued and plans to get.
All right, Mr. Larry, what you got, surface water plan?
Thank you, Mayor. Unless the board has questions, I really don't have anything new at this time. I'll answer any questions, yeah.
Everything smooth?
Yes, sir.
You got a full staff?
No, sir, we're still, we're trying to hire electricians still.
Another electrician, yeah. We hired Richard.
Yeah, so that's what the waste volume.
Oh, that's, oh, Kevin, okay. All right. We got one we loaned to Kevin if we need him. Okado, Kevin, what you got?
Everything's pretty much the same as the last inning we have. We're still pushing water out, you know, same stuff. We did get the vehicles in, the Nissans, to hopefully get the rest of the paperwork in, so we can legally put them on the road during storage. We got possession of them, just waiting on, you know, the paperwork, so we can make them all legal. That's pretty much where we are. Still working on the lab and the all that kind of stuff.
How about your staff?
We're full.
Okay.
So, if Larry will leave my electrician on, then, you know, we'll be okay.
All right. Okay, Mike?
I've got the summary together by location for our funds available to put back into our facilities from insurance and from FEMA. Jim and I haven't had an opportunity to review it closely yet, so I'd like to do that, and then I'll push that out to you, so we can all start thinking about not only the lift stations, but all of our other facilities that we need to start planning for.
Good deal. All right, just put that together. All right, Mr. Clay, come on up.
Yes, sir. Start lift stations.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Gentlemen, we got to, we got to pass them with engineering those lift stations. We got a little money from the state, believe it or not, it's in our possession and not theirs, and we can, we can pay for a few things, so.
And I think with the First Street and maybe the 20th Street, we got to pass orders together, maybe, it's been a while on that. I have to remember, but we can put one in where we can, just let it end as well, and maybe bring all those back to you, so.
If you do that, it'd be great. We can start moving forward to getting things put back together the right way, and hopefully the legislative appropriations will come through that's going to help us, especially with First Street.
Yeah, that's the main thing, I want to make sure we're ready.
Yeah, absolutely.
When we do get, get the, okay, with the money.
Yes, sir, okay.
Just going down the list, the trail lighting, Duke reached out, they need an easement from the same company on a small piece of that where the lights are going. They're, they're working on that. Fortunately, they do that from time to time today. I expect that'll just, but nonetheless, that's where that is.
Yeah, that thing's been going on, on the Langston sidewalk, I think, and we certainly need to maybe close it out. I think everybody's aware that we got a $25,000 match, and we don't even have any lights up yet, so, so we need to, I think we need to see some, something as soon as we can, Clay.
Yes, sir, I think in terms of lighting, I don't think there's any in the city that you're that aware of. I think Duke can say.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah, I know, but we just need to ride hurt on somebody that, let's get it done.
I don't have a date for you on the payment. Like I said last time, they told me they'd be down here in the next several weeks to catch it while over here. I know they're in the area, but they haven't given me a date, even as of today. I have support pretty regularly, but I will continue pushing it forward. And then, several things on SCOP grants. You know, y'all, you qualify to apply for municipal SCOP grant pretty much every year, and over the last several years since the state opened that program up. If you did for success, we did one phase of garrison, we're finishing the design on a second phase of garrison. First Street is funded for next year. You applied for that one, I think, last year here before it got funded. It's on the list to be done. So, it's time, March 20th is actually when they're due, so you got a lot of fun, but you have another application to put in. And so, you know, a couple of ideas, I'll just go and match it, and y'all can go with where we're going, but I would look at, you know, probably Madison is a good, front high school, is probably a good candidate. That's also pretty bad shape, meets all requirements for that grant application. Having it paid would be one, probably from Commissioner Quinn on the road fund, did from the rubber track back out to 71. I might look at rubber track back to 98, that's probably a good candidate. Long Avenue's a bad shape, I think we all know, want to circle around there, so you may or may not want to get it, get it back in or into it, and utilities, but not something you necessarily have to decide today, because at that time, if you decide something first week of March, something is.
It's, Avenue B, Jim, you and I were talking about something beside A that was such bad shape.
C and D are pretty bad.
C and D, okay.
But you got utilities under it. We have the CDVG, there's some process that's going to address some of those utilities over there, so I would suggest that once you get done with that CDVG, you may have some section that would be candidates for payment at that point, but like a lot of our streets, unfortunately, John's got utilities underneath on that, that is, that are subject to fail at any time.
Yeah, and there's like Woodward Avenue from 10th to 16th Streets, probably one of our worst in town, even though it's got a lot of utilities under it, too. I think, though, at some point in time, we're just going to have to dig down, patch up those areas compactly good and go ahead and pave. We, I don't think we'll maybe in our lifetime ever get all the infrastructure fixed that we need to fix, so we can pave the roads. We just, some point in time, we just got to pave some of these roads, they're terrible, somehow. They're terrible somehow, so. Yeah, we got quite a few that we can bring to you.
Sure.
Clay, what's the upper limit we can ask for in SCOP grant? Can we do several projects?
I've seen, there's a town in South Water that has been successful with that, doing very short roads and five or six of them. I haven't seen it as much in the band. I think Quincy, either Quincy or Chadwick, she did a couple of years ago. We got funded that way. So it's not impossible, you know, certainly. I think you're probably looking at somewhere, no more than about a half a mile or so, probably total of six tenths of a mile maybe. Anything larger than that, that's for this program's a pretty large project. Only because there's only 90 million in the pot and there's 92 cities that qualify for it, county or something like that. But there's a lot of competition provided. So if you go and ask for much more, three, four hundred thousand, it's a, you kind of got a challenge.
We got a lot of short run roads that we've, we've got to take care of.
With 32 is they give additional points for connecting roads to state highways. They look at what, what goes in front of the road, a school, nursing, all of those kind of things. So we've been successful because we were looking at those big connector roads. So you're really limited.
Madison or A.
What's going to really get you the highest number of points to qualify.
When we say we're going, going to do this road but do another?
Good try. That's outside of the box.
I got one question, Ray.
Yes, sir.
When do you think they start working, begin on First Street? Is it going to be this year?
Oh, the, the money is available with DOT's fiscal year 2021 budget. So that starts June 1st of this year. So they'll roll into their new budget. So they typically put those grant agreements out like November or so of this year. So it'll probably be about this time next year before you would see pay through or something down First Street.
Yeah, definitely needs it. First Street definitely needs it.
Yeah, in front of the high school, there are numerous potholes. I seen the patch truck out there the other day. County's patch truck, I believe it was. Just a thought.
Yep. Anything else for Clay? Got plenty, plenty to do now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
For us, for sure.
We just need to make a decision by, what'd you say?
Let's do it next week, the first week. They'll give us, see if we can do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Code enforcement, Jim, you got a report on that? We, two more going to a special master.
Yes, sir. We had, our special magistrate has reviewed two cases, gave us a recommendation. Those are in process now. And Mr. Burkett has advertised two more that will be heard in the next 30 days. So we're moving through that process.
Okay, all right. Police Department, I see CP back there. You going to report or you going to let Jim do it, CP?
Jim.
Okay.
Mayor, what you got is we did get some good news. Your police chief, Mr. Herring, has been working through, looking at a grant. He found some additional money for two more vehicles that would give two new, additional vehicles to the police department. It's about a $70,000 grant. With that, we would have to outfit the cars on there to about $15,000. But this would just about complete your fleet as to all new vehicles. He just wanted to make sure you're aware of the grant and that, yes, we will have to come up with $15,000. It's not in the budget, but we didn't know we would get a $70,000 grant.
There's the money in the police budget overall. I know he's lacking, was lacking officers for part of the time. Is it all going to, bottom line not going to change if we do this?
I haven't reviewed that, but I'll certainly look into it.
We need, I think we need to move forward a grant. Get two vehicles for $15,000? I asked him if we can get four, but we couldn't, so.
He just wanted to make sure FYI you'll realize that we might spend $15,000 for the outfit on there, but you got the grant that came.
I'm good with that.
So, so there's a motion to approve going out for the JAG grant. And then we'll figure out the rest later on. There's a motion. Second. No second, I can, Mr. Langston. Any further discussion, all in favor, aye. The same sound motion passed by, another. All right, Mr. Pierce, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, sir. At least some questions of the board.
Anybody? Or Mr. Pierce? Okay.
Thank you.
Citizens to be heard, anyone in the audience, Miss Wood?
I apologize that I did not think to mention this before. As part of the new lease that we have, we will, of course, be taking over the utilities for the Heckling Building. We've always paid the utilities at the gift shop building in the town. There have been some special arrangements made with power at the Heckling Building. I worked with Jim about getting that transferred over to us. But for the future, when people come into the park and want power, there will have to be arrangements made because we cannot support
Scarlet Festival.
A power deal for festivals or concerts or things like that. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that so there will be no surprises if someone comes to you and says they won't give me power.
Okay, yeah, that'll happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So is all that tied together?
I think it's going to be separated. Some of the area, you have a whole nother panel that's over by the pump station thing over there. But now if somebody wanted to come in and tie into the, the building itself on there, that would be.
Well, there is actually a, I don't know what you call it, but at the back of the building, there was power put there to run bouncy houses and things.
Or when they light the.
And when they light the tower, that runs off of that.
I heard that was pretty costly.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else, please come up.
Afternoon, I'm Mr. McRoy, Woodward Avenue, Port St. John. I have a question, especially after the last time I was here. When you hire outside, let's say services or contract with people, do you ask them to sign disclosure forms that show, you know, who they are in business with and, you know, maybe some things that might be a conflict of interest like we had with our past attorney?
I don't think so. Help me with that, Jim. Outside of employment contracts, do we require?
Normal vendors and those, sir, if you're looking at specific contracts on there, you know, the attorney myself, yes. But if you start looking at somebody that's building a building or those type of things, not always, no, sir. I don't think there's a specific policy.
Right.
Because on the contract, they go.
Can you research, if you wouldn't mind, what, what some of the other municipalities in the area do? And let's see if it's something we want to add to something on the phone.
I, I think it would help from a standing standpoint for the taxpayers. Again, if our taxpayer dollars are coming into somebody's pocket regardless of what they, their service might be, we should be able to understand if they have other connections in the city or the county that might lead to, you know, how they got the job. So, and this leads me to our current BCC solutions because I did do some research and that gentleman does have some connections here in the county with another business. It's, it's, let's see, Gulf Container, Gulf Container Solutions. So again, it's, it's a little, I guess unsettling. But I would like to know for his debris pickup. He just picked up from my home last Wednesday. And is, is it correct to understand he is supposed to pick up from each home every four weeks? For, when you say once a month, I mean, someone could go seven weeks into the following month and not pick up. However, I'm expected to pay monthly for it, so I just.
I assume he's supposed to hit everybody. I don't know how he can pull that off, but he's supposed to do it once a month. Everybody.
Right, so for example, I got pickup on the 12th for my debris. And it was out there for, I think, pretty close to six weeks.
Yeah.
We just need to manage that because now I'm doing more trimming and I've got more debris and I would like that gone on the 12th of this next month.
I think that's the main problem we've had so far and I think he's aware of it. Jim's been forwarding that over to him.
If you would like, I know we would try to, we would like some clarity ourselves, Mayor, as to specifically which areas are cleared and when they're going to be going through. So if you like, I can send a memorandum over to you.
Please do.
See if I can get some clarity.
I appreciate that. I greatly appreciate that. And then the last thing is when, for example, garbage pickup, I'll go to that, do they have to supply VIN numbers for their vehicles to the city?
I don't think so.
They, they really kind of should. I mean, you know, you should know what equipment, you know, what their VIN numbers are or what, who, who owns the equipment, et cetera. I mean, it's just, again, total transparency when you've got big contracts.
Then if we get Robertson Roberts in here paving the roads, we're going to have to ask him to do the same thing.
Yeah.
That's kind of tough, tough, tough nut to crack.
Yeah, but I, my thing right now, Mr. Mayor, with all the things that are going on in the panhandle, it's, it's better safe than sorry in the fact that we have had some conflict of interest things. I just think we need to not fall prey to what has happened in other areas and other municipalities. Because everyone might have good intentions, but then if you don't set policies in place, then who really gets damaged are the innocent people.
Right.
And the taxpayers. Just, let's see, I think the other thing that I did want to ask you is, so this rate study, and I know we'll discuss it at another meeting, it is very important, that understanding how we're going to repay the debt that's still out there. And I'm wondering, because I just Googled real quick back there, is there opportunity for grants to help offset the cost for rate studies?
We're hoping to get that.
And, and so just looking at DEP and I don't know if Northwest Florida Water Management District has something, but it, I think it is important, again, for the citizens to understand why their rates are what they are and that we want to be careful to pay our debt so that the city doesn't find themselves in bad financial ramifications. So, all right.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'll, I'll give these documents about BCC waste solutions and.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Come right up, Mr. Joe, state your name and sign.
Hello, everybody, Joe Wager, Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to just let you guys know our festival dates for this year and invite everybody to the ribbon cutting. First things first are our dates. Blues on Reed will be March the 27th to 28th, on Reed Avenue. Scout Festival will be September the 4th and 6th. The Chamber will be involved with the Scout Festival again. We're coming, we're bringing that back on board. And Portover Fest, City Commons, that will be on September the 26th. And just my festival, if you don't mind, I forgot Music Festival. We're going to, I'm dumb enough to do that again, so I haven't lost enough money yet. So that'll be, we're going to add a day, so it'll be 13th, 14th, 15th in November. And this afternoon, between 4:00 and 6:00, there'll be a ribbon cutting over at H&R Block. Everybody's invited. There'll be food, there'll be drink, and hopefully someone will be there and will want to say something maybe.
They, are they at the Pinky Whiskey Plaza, is that still where they are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'd love to see all of you.
4:00 and 6:00, ribbon cutting at 4:00, I saw.
Yes, sir.
Refreshments there after.
Absolutely, and we will have a pair of scissors and some really nice new ribbon that will be unveiled, so come check out the new stuff.
Good deal.
Any questions?
Not at all, Joe. Thank you, you're busy. You're busy, glad to see you.
Trying to keep you busy.
Yeah, happy. All right, anyone else? Okay, discussion, I, y'all said I could be first last meeting, remember that?
Yes, we did.
Before. I don't have anything to say.
You up for your turn?
Next, Commissioner Langston, we'll start with you.
Okay, we met the, the community garden, met at the Garden Saturday. We staked out the, where we wanted the boxes at. We staked out where we were going to put the corn. And I was just looking for, I suppose get with John tomorrow, put some, get him to cut some wood and make the boxes. And hopefully we'll be planting next month. So I'd just like to thank those that came out to help. We had, we had a great time. It was a little bit of work, but we enjoyed it. And I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a good thing for, for the community. And if you have any volunteers, just get in touch with me or Ms. Bibi and we'll be happy to accommodate you with some of this work. That's about all.
I'll get up, next.
Say something.
Yes, Ms. Claire, please come up.
I need to sign in.
Sorry. She's connected with our community garden.
Yeah, I have access to, I gave some seeds this past fall. I work with a food bank in Atlanta.
Yes, ma'am.
Or in Monroe, Georgia, where we are, outside of Atlanta. And I have access to, we had all the seeds that Walmart had and they're in tons.
Yeah.
This big, at the end of the seed, they just took all them out. It's all kinds of seed, they are 2019. But I can get some and bring them down here for the planting. I mean, every kind of seed they sell. It's tomatoes, corn, everything. If you're interested in it.
Yes, I am, that'd be wonderful.
I can get a bunch of. And it's flowers, everything, I mean, they've got wildflowers, kind of sprinkling them anywhere. But if you're interested in them, I'll be, I'll bring them down the next couple of weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Get them to you.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
I just have a couple of things, Mayor. First one for Jim, where are we at on our appropriation requests? Have we heard, has anything died in some committee or is it all still going forward?
I have not heard. Last I heard, they were still up for consideration.
Do you have a list of the bill numbers that those all are?
I do.
I'm going to Tallahassee on Thursday and I just kind of wanted to follow up, but I need to know what I'm asking for.
I will send over an email to our representatives by Friday.
Okay, and then another thing, when Clay was talking about projects that we have going on, you know, First Street being paved at some point, I think I discussed this at a prior meeting. It would be very helpful to the citizens and to the commission to be able to pull up the site showing upcoming projects. You know, if it's on our CIP and it's been, funding's been applied for, let's just say funding has been applied for it, funding's been approved, let's put that. I would hesitate putting a completion date on there because it might hold you to it, but at least know that we've already applied for these things. I was going to bring up First Street saying it was really in a bad, in bad shape and then I just found out today that it's been approved. So something, information passing along to the citizens of what, if they want to know if the road in front of their house is being paved, check the sheet.
I've got a list of all the grants that we have that's been queued once it's been approved and I, I'll get that out to you.
Sure.
And you can take a look at it. If you want to add information, take away information, let us know and then we can get some.
We just managed to have a link on the website that says upcoming projects.
I'll get it out to you off the road.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
The only thing I had was HMGP grant program, Jim. Have we filed anything under that? I know it was due, there was a short time schedule on that.
You talking about the hazard mitigation grants on there? Actually, we've been trying to look into that as quick as we could. There was a list that came down, that actually works through the county. That's how that works. We've been trying to contact Marshall last couple of days. I think he's out sick. But what we have, no, we have not filed any applications in there, but we have a list of everything that was thrown through Marshall's office there. We're trying to get clarification exactly, that process on there for the city on there. The list included the items, Langford, to my understanding, was the county had actually hired Langford and associates to actually do the work for them. We, on that list, we had actually met the mayor, myself, Charlotte. We had met with them a few times and a lot of items that we tried to address that would not. them a few times, and a lot of items that we tried to address said would not qualify. The ones that they said would qualify, that they thought would be candidates, would be for the elevation of your lift stations, so Mr. Smallwood's, Wardwood's, they got those numbers, and we've got that on the list. The only other thing they thought maybe would qualify would be if you wanted some generators for the Centennial Building or for like the Washington Zoo. So the list was very limited, because one of the things we thought was, what about a new complex? They felt that it probably wouldn't qualify unless you actually tied it into an EOC building. So there's not a lot of items, it's gotta be mitigation, raising a bridge, uh, raising a, a lift station, those type of things. So, Ms. Pierce was actually working today, trying to get some clarification on there exactly how we get that application process put in.
Would, would you have to, uh, just have a separate EOC building, or could you have an EOC room inside a city complex? A new city complex?
The city chambers can be the EOC building in the event of emergencies.
That's, that's correct, so I, I just really don't understand why we wouldn't qualify for some money to help us build a complex.
Mayor, what scares me is...
You got to fund it, what can you say?
They made it pretty clear at that workshop, that they're the last resort, the DEO, CDVG, DR funding needs to be the last ask, and they said that if you are eligible for the hazard mint, that you wouldn't qualify for the other. That's my only fear, is that we have a project that we're gonna try to get CDVG grant money for, and they say you should've went for hazard mint, and that's closed soon, or if...
Two weeks. I'm at two weeks, I think. So I think we should go, I think we should ask, I mean, about a city complex, they might say, but we need maybe have it writing like Mr. Ashbrook says, that, that we were turned down.
At least we tried.
Yeah, exactly.
Or in the event, our city complex, we've got an EOC type facility built inside of it, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I would argue that it would at least be housed for staff that could go out and be imminent to help with public safety right after the event.
True.
Because last time we had everybody at the water plant, we need a safe, secure spot that as soon as the storm has passed, that we can get out to help our citizens.
We didn't have any places to go to meet, we just went to the parking lot behind the building after the storm.
I mean, we're, that property's high and run.
Yes, it is.
We'll work on, like I said, Ms. Pierce, and then call her, and try to find out exactly what this process is.
I would send it in, even if they said it probably won't qualify.
Just to be safe.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Brad, I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I have nothing official. I would like to remind everyone that we have, uh, the girls' basketball plays tonight right there.
Yes, ma'am.
And the boys play Thursday night. If both teams win, they have the possibility of both teams advancing to the state. Be the first time ever in the history.
And is here, uh, Mr. Langston, is he here, what time?
Uh, 7 o'clock tonight for the girls.
Okay.
7 o'clock Thursday night for the boys.
All right, good, good deal, good deal. And I'll circle back to me, I wanna thank the, uh, I believe it's Sarah Darden at the Garden Club, uh, they've, uh, taken care of our planters in front of City Hall. We told them we'd take care of and keep them water, but they have replanted those, and I wanna give them a shout out, that we appreciate it very much. That being said, I'll, in taking mention of engineering, we're gone.